Good afternoon, everyone. It's a pleasure to have everybody here. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Williams.
I'm here.
Mayor Pro Tem Middleton.
I'm here.
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Caballero.
Here.
Councilmember Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman. And Councilmember Rist.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, colleagues, good to see you. Are there any announcements? Madam, Councilmember Cook.
Good afternoon, everyone, mostly staff folks and colleagues. I just wanted to say several of us were in attendance yesterday when the federal folks from HUD came to visit our local public housing authority, DHA, and we were able to go to visit some sites and also hear from some leaders of some of these communities. And I just wanted to send out a thank you to those folks who met with us yesterday in the middle of the day. I know not everybody was able to come from their various community representatives because it was in the middle of the day, but those who did come did a really excellent job articulating the issues that are going on at some of those locations. And we had some really good intercourse, I thought, or discourse between the HUD folks and our citizens, which was really exciting to see. And specifically, I know there's been a lot of conversation around McDougal Terrace and some hopes and dreams for some new building nearby in order to move the residents out of those older units that are there. And our nice friend from HUD did say that he was committed to working with us on that project, and so I was excited to hear that.
Thank you. You can come on down if you have any announcements.
Good afternoon, colleagues, folks in attendance. Thank you for being here. I just want to speak actually on the housing topic. Thank you, colleague, Councilmember Cook, on the topic of housing. Today is the, what today is the 6th, right? So in about a week, a little more than a week, we'll have proposals coming in for the 505 development, 505 Chapel Hill Street, the former police station. I've heard a lot from community members about that site. It's an important site for Durham, high-value site. A lot of folks are concerned about affordable housing at that site. I share their concerns. And so I just want to say that as we get ready for the proposals to come in, I'm really excited to see proposals that come in at or above the required 91 affordable housing units, which someone needs to get highly advantageous ranking. So I'm hoping to see proposals come in way above that. I know the county has redeveloped a couple sites or is redeveloping a couple sites right now on Main Street, one of which has 100 affordable housing units, the other has 200 affordable housing units. So I think we could do great things at that site with affordable housing. So again, I'm just saying, I'm really looking forward to proposals coming in with well above the 91 required so that someone could get a highly advantageous ranking for their proposal. So I look forward to that. I look forward to seeing those with the colleagues, and I look forward to evaluating those with staff. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome home. Glad you're safely back with us. Good afternoon, colleagues, everyone in the chamber and all those watching on whatever platform are you watching. Just to dovetail on Councilmember Cook and Councilmember Rist already mentioned, Mr. Mayor, it was a pleasure to welcome Deputy Assistant Secretary of HUD's Department of Public and Indian Housing, the Honorable Richard Minocchio, to Durham yesterday. Had an opportunity to host a panel discussion. I particularly want to thank our residents of our public housing complexes here who asked some pretty straightforward, and I think rubber meets road, questions. Mr. Mayor, the Deputy Assistant Secretary wanted me to make sure that Secretary Fudge and the President send their regards, you were in DC, but send their regards to you, and we're very impressed with what Durham has going on. We've got a lot of work to do. I told the folk yesterday, Mr. Mayor, that the conversation didn't end with a period or an exclamation point, but with a comma, indicating that there's still work to be done. So glad for that visit yesterday, and I'm looking forward to a good work session today. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I yield back.
Thank you. As stated, I spent some time in DC the last couple of days with the Yale CEO and Mayor's Summit, and I was probably the most concentrated and policy-rich room I've ever been in, from having dinner with Tom Rogers, the founder and owner of CNBC and MSNBC, to, you know, spending time talking about international issues and understanding how and what is going on in the Middle East so we can better be informed on the local level with Jake Sullivan, the National Security Advisor to the President. Also getting some real, on-the-ground perspective from the princess of Saudi Arabia, Saudi Arabia, and hearing from her side of things where she actually sort of pushed back a little bit on what's happening. But what I did notice was there was, there is an overall strategy where everyone is on the same page, and that means governments. So that was really, really, really insightful. And I was the one that posed the question. I said, I think we all, I think the conversation between Jake Sullivan and the CEO of Motorola and AARP were going back and forth, and I was the person that posed the question. So what is the message? We all know what's going on and what's happening, but what is the message, and how do we relay that on the ground level? As one of the 40 mayors that are here, I want to be able to be able to provide this information for our residents. So being at the core of that discussion on Middle East conflict and Ukraine and Russia, and how it impacts us here on the ground level, I stood in that moment with pride to represent Durham with 40, also 40 mayors, 40 CEOs, 40 of Fortune 500 CEOs in the room with the White House senior staff. So that was really cool. I think the highlight of my trip to DC was on my way home last night, and as I was about to board my plane, I saw a classmate from high school who works in the Congress, in our Congress, and she waves, "Oh, my God, Leo, come here." And I go over, and I see a young lady who's 109 years old, beautiful, black woman from Halifax County, North Carolina, where I'm from. She's going to be featured in the State of the Union tonight with the President. And it just felt really cool to see you, and CEO of Delta was there to greet her as well, and myself, just by chance. That was quite the highlight. And also, in closing, having a conversation with the CEO of T-Mobile and ensuring that we have all of our connectivity resources here that we could use, or if we need more, we have that, and also connecting all 30-something thousand of our students in our public schools household to Wi-Fi and internet. So this was a busy two days, but I definitely enjoyed it. And I'm back to DC next week for the National League of Cities. All right? Which I think I have some folks joining me on there, on here. But anyway, let's get to the people's business, and I'll acknowledge the priority items by our city manager, attorney, and clerk.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor Williams, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem Middleton, and members of the Durham City Council. The city manager's office has no priority items for you this afternoon.
Thank you. Madam Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor Williams. Good to see you. Mayor Pro Tem Middleton, members of the council, good to be here. The city attorney's office has one priority item today, and that is a request that the city council hold a closed session at the end of all regular business for attorney-client consultation.
Madam Attorney, it's been probably a bad practice of mine, but I've been waiting until the end of the agenda to entertain your priority item, and also it needs to be two separate requests, two separate motions. So I want to go ahead and entertain those when you make that request.
Okay. So the first request is a request to hold a closed session.
Colleagues, I'll entertain a motion to accept the request of the city attorney's closed session.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's moved and properly seconded. Please acknowledge by raising your left hand. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And the actual motion language to go into closed session is to hold a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318.1183, for attorney-client consultation concerning the handling of a settlement demand for a yet-to-be-filed liability action.
I'll entertain a motion on what she just said.
Second.
All right, all in favor? Thank you. Madam Clerk, does that work better? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, at this time, I'll entertain priority items by the city clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome. To you and to the members of city council, Mayor Pro Tem and city council members. The city clerk's office doesn't have any priority items today.
Thank you so much. All right, at this time, I'll address the consent agenda. Any item can be pulled by council member or member of the public. Item number one, Mayor's Hispanic-Latino Committee Appointment. Item number two, Durham Workers' Rights Commission Appointment. Item number three, Approval of City-City Minutes. Four, Boards, Committees, Commissions, and Task Force Calendar Year 2023 Annual Attendance Report.
Can you pull that one?
I was actually going to myself. Good deal. Number five, Approval of a Multifamily Housing Facility to be Known as Trails at Twin Lakes Apartment Homes in the City of Durham and the financing thereof with multifamily housing revenue bonds not to exceed 5.1 million.
I have some questions on a few of these, but I don't need to pull them.
Go ahead and pull it. We'll just. Number six, Establishment of a 911 Alternate Call Routing into Local Agreement with the City of Fayetteville.
Can you pull that, please, Mr. Mayor?
Number seven, Second Amendment to the Professional Services Contract with Perkins &amp; Will Incorporated for the Durham Station Transit Center Improvements Project. Number eight, Fire and Emergency Medical Services Station 19 Architectural Services Agreement with ADW Architects PA. Number nine, American Rescue Plan Act Project Right-of-Way Tree Watering with Jumpin' Buddies LLC DBA Pit Stop Pressure Washing. All right, we'll pull that one. Number nine. Number 10, American Rescue Plan Act Project Right-of-Way in Cemetery Tree Planting with Davis Landscape LTD Limited. Number 10. Number 11, Durham Station Transit Center Improvements Project Construction Manager at Risk Pre-Qualification Procedures Resolution. Number 12, Fire and Emergency Medical Services Station 19 Construction Manager at Risk Agreement with Semet Corporation. Number 13, Amendment to Mayor's Hispanic-Latino Committee Bylaws. Number 14, Governor's Crime Commission 2023 Criminal Justice Improvement Program Grant Project Ordinance. Number 15, Contract ST-39D Pavement Asset Management Plan Programming. Number 16, Contract SW-96 PW Street Maintenance Repairs 2024. Number 17, Contract SW-96C Inspection Services for PW Street Maintenance Repairs. Eighteen, Street and Infrastructure Acceptances. And for presentations, we have Transportation Department Go Durham Fiscal Year 2023 Annual And we have Budget Management Services 20 Public Hearing on the Fiscal Year 2024/2025 Budget and Fiscal Year 2025 and 30 Capital Improvement Plan. Citywide Planning Department, we have consolidated annexation 3411 to 3417 Picket Road, 22 consolidation, annexation, sharing road apartments. All right, and that is our agenda with items four, five, six, nine, and 10. Pulled. All right, and we'll now address citizens' matters. All right, this is an item, those are resource people. All right, Madam Clerk, I do have folks online. Where is it? Do you see Donna Steinbach? Donna, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey there, speak up just a little bit for me, and I'm welcome. You have three minutes.
Okay, I gotta, I thought I had the volume. Okay, there are several council members that are being derogatory to us citizens. You know, when we bring up issues of infrastructure, environment, or the comprehensive plan, folks do not know my background and history. And, you know, just FYI, I am disabled and do require a car, haven't been able to ride a bicycle in 30 years because of arthritis. And, you know, there was just a whole smear of council members that were being derogatory to us during the March 4th meeting. And I hope that we can keep from saying, "I like this about you," or "I don't like that," but focus on the issues that we bring forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Steinbach, and I'm sorry that that came off that way for whoever, whatever it was, but thanks for bringing it to my attention. All right, next I have Jeremy Bergren.
See Mr. Bergren in the queue.
All right, and finally, I have DeWarren Langley.
Mr. Langley is in the queue.
He is?
He is.
He is, okay. Mr. Langley, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, welcome. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem.
If you could speak up a little bit for me, though.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and members of the Durham City Council, as well as the senior administrative staff of the City of Durham. As I was sitting in queue, the question I asked myself is, what can I say today in order to get the council to make boys of color a budgetary and policy priority? I mean, the data is clear. We see the crisis. We know what organizations are doing the work in the community. I was just before getting on to give this comment, texting one of my scholars who has an interview with Progressive Energy where he's going to be interviewing for an IT position, and that is how you transform lives of boys and young men of color, is by providing them with the consistent support, nurturing environment, and developmental opportunities that will allow them to transform their lives. And I know you all have a $6 million surplus budget, as well as some other discretionary funding you all could shift around, and I repeatedly come to you all requesting investment in the work that I do voluntarily in our community. No matter how much I love Durham and the volunteering that I do, it does cost money to feed the boys that we serve, to pay for opportunities for them to participate in camps, and for them to participate in internship opportunities. So I'm just really asking you all in this budget to make boys of color a budgetary and policy priority, and give us some money so that we can continue the great impactful work that we're doing. And I'll be reaching out to each one of you via email to share more and to, again, make this appeal. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Langley, and I look forward to your email. There's a great deal of work that is already in motion, may not happen as fast as we all prefer, but there is a great deal that's happening. And it is much more holistic than a single organization. Hope that you'll be a part of this overall movement. Thank you. All right, let's start with our pulled items here. All right, number four, this was pulled by Councilmember Rist.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, members of the city council. Lola Roland here from the city clerk's office, sitting in for Javon Pratt. I'm here to answer any questions you might have about item four.
Paola, you can't roll up on me like that. I didn't know what was happening. I was like, what's going on? Are we? Yeah, all right. Good deal. Councilmember.
Oh, thank you. So Lola's here as resource on this one, yeah. Yeah, so I guess it's for Paola? Paola, yeah. So my question, Paola, is I see the memo there with, I guess, the names of folks who will be, who are, this is a list of folks who have fallen under 50% attendance, and they will be, they will be asked to exit, they'll be removed from those committees, right? But as I reviewed the whole list of boards and commissions that was attached to that memo, it seems like there's a lot more names that have below 50% attendance. And I know in your memo, you said that if they're not on the list on the first page, but their attendance is below 50%, then they've already maybe resigned, but it just seemed like a lot of peoples. I just want to make sure I understand what's here, what the process is, and I want to make sure we're communicating this clearly to folks on boards and commissions so they understand that they're being, that they're being taken off the rolls from these boards and commissions. So a little more clarity on what all is here would be very helpful.
Sure. Thank you so much for your inquiry, Councilmember Rist. I just want to make sure you all can hear me. Can you?
Yes.
Okay, just, so this actual item was submitted by Javon Pratt. It's her item, but she's not here today, so I'm filling in for her as I've submitted this item previously. So if the member isn't listed on the first page, that is because they have already resigned or their term has expired. That is why the 50% has already been noted if they fall under that 50%, so they're actually no longer part of the actual commission or committee. The list of members that's listed on the first page submitted by Javon, now, these won't be automatically removed, so the clerk's office follows the removal process before actually removing the member. So it's, in the motion of this item, it says for Diana to start the removal process. So that will start with an email, phone call, and actual physical letter sent to the member to inquire about whether or not they'd like to keep on serving, and to discuss what their obstacles are for attending the meetings and how we can assist. So if no correspondence is received from the member that's on that first page, then Diana will continue through that removal process and formally remove them. If they do reply, and if there are some obstacles that we can assist with, we will definitely help. Or if they reply and say, "Hey, I've been very busy. I apologize, I've missed, you know, the past two meetings, but I'm definitely interested in continuing to serve," then they will continue to be part of the board or committee that they've been appointed to.
Appreciate that. I guess my other question is, I assume the board chairs are sort of in touch with you on a regular basis so they understand this issue of who may be falling below the 50% so they can remind folks, right? So I want to make sure that process is in place. I also want to ask about if there's, if the number of folks who are below 50% and not showing up is causing any difficulty in establishing quorum at these boards and committees? Or do we have, is that something we need to look into further? I just want to make sure that's not in any way hampering the ability of chairs to do the business of their boards and commissions.
As we've been instructed in the past for the clerk's office, as we've been instructed, so typically, the majority of our boards have a staff liaison housed within their respective departments that communicate directly with the board chairs and their members. So typically, the clerk's office only communicates directly with that liaison if they do not have an assigned staff member that's a city employee. Now, in regards of quorum, a lot of these boards, the members can range anywhere between four to 17 members, and as you'll see on the summary page, it's max of two people who are falling underneath this attendance. So I can't speak directly on every single board as there's 29 of them that we manage the vacancies for, but I'm unsure if the ones that are noted on this first summary page are affecting quorum or not.
I guess the last thing is just for the, and this is just a sort of comment to the rest of my colleagues. You know, again, given the number of folks who are, look like on those lists were falling below those marks and maybe have already been removed, it does make me wonder with so many boards and commissions, if this is, is this the right number of commissions we need in boards and commissions, or are there some here that are no longer as, if we're having trouble filling spots, right? Are there some that are no longer as important? So I just want to flag that as something to potentially take up at a further conversation.
Thank you, and that is definitely one of the items that I ultimately would like to look at. We do have a lot of boards, committees, and commissions, and I think an audit of needs could be something we look at soon. Councilmember, I, that was one of the first things I noticed when I got on council. I think it's 27, and 29? 29. And, you know, the question is, are they all, you know, efficient or necessary in this time? Not saying that they're not necessary, but they were created for a reason at one point that that need still exists. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did want to add for Ms. Roland that we also explained the attendance policy upfront when people join the boards and committees. So it's not as if they have no idea that this regulation applies to them, so they are aware from the get-go.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah, I definitely appreciate the city's diligence, the city staff, their diligence in it. Also, when it comes to us as council members, as you all know, which we could, Madam Attorney, we could get an update, you could send an email, that legislation that came about the voting on boards, could you just send that refresher to us, or you want to just kind of talk about it? But where I'm going is, because council members can no longer be voting members on boards and commissions, I believe, or, what is it?
We can't vote on nonprofit boards anymore.
Yeah, that's what it is.
We're not our own internal, we're not voting members on our internal ones, anyway. We're ex officios for the most part, except for maybe DOST, which has weird bylaws. But...
Like the Museum of History.
MPO, whatever, yeah.
There. We're supposed to be listed as ex officio members.
Right, okay. So if you don't mind giving us a, not to put you on the spot, you can send an email if you like, or if you want to just kind of briefly talk about it, but that change in policy sort of informed my assignments to you all on council, which, how many you get assigned to, and, you know, whether you must be there to make a vote, or you could just be the liaison, really, in practice, between those different groups.
Sure, Mr. Mayor. So the provision that you're referring to, I think it's 14234.3. I'm going to look at Fred and see if he remembers. I'll follow up with the specific provision for sure, but it was a modification made to the conflict of interest rules. I think it went into effect at the beginning of 2021, 2022, maybe, January 1. And it's not that you can't vote on nonprofit boards at all, it's that you can't vote on a contract between the city of Durham and a nonprofit. And and there are a number of organizations that do have contracts with the city. Mayor Pro Tem, I think, serves on Downtown Durham, Inc., and they often bring items to us. And so in that instance, the council member needs to recuse themselves from participating in the vote that would transfer money from the organization for which you are an elected official to the nonprofit. I thought.
Yeah, that's pretty clear. Thank you. I went to law school on YouTube, so I'm not as thorough as you are. All right. So are we all good? Councilmember Rist? Good, good deal. All right, item number five, Councilmember Baker.
Yeah, just one, one question and then one question sort of tangential to that. I think I know the answer to this, but the, the language here says a minimum of 30 years. I think I, I think we've talked about this before, but the, the intent is that this is permanently affordable, correct?
Reginald Johnson, Director of Community Development Department. Yes, the intention is that it's long-term affordability, but that's up to the developer. That's not up to the city.
So it could just be a minimum of 30 years.
Yes, it could.
The affordability runs out.
Yes, that's correct. Because you're following, and we do, I do have Eric Prestel, who is the representing the Twin Lakes LLC on the line. He can elaborate a little bit more. But you're following the guide, guidelines of the Qualified Allocation Plan of the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency.
Okay. Yeah. I, I mean, I just, as always, it concerns me that public dollars go to something where the affordability run runs out. So, so I guess my next question to that is, this is the tangential question to that issue, is do we maintain a database of all the units in, in our city where there's only temporary affordability? And then we know how much longer they are affordable and when that affordability runs out and when we're losing units to, to temporarily affordability, temporary affordability?
So when you, what are you referencing when you mean temporary?
So 30 years of affordability and then it, and then it goes back to market rate?
So the, no, we don't have a database of those that we do not have financing with, financing relationships. There are other developers like, like Twin Lakes that we don't have any money in, in terms of our contribution. That's one of the outstanding projects that we have in terms of our community developers' work is to try to find all of the, the housing, affordable housing that we do not have relationships with that have affordability requirements on them.
Okay, so we, so public dollars go for 30 year, 30 years of affordability. We know where those units are and how much longer they are intended to remain affordable. Is that correct?
No, we don't know.
We don't know even for the public dollars that are being used?
No, we know the ones that have used city funds.
Yeah.
We know those.
We know those.
There are some.
Everything else we don't, we don't know.
That is correct.
Okay. And but you said that's, that's in the queue of a project.
Yes, yes, it is.
Is to, do you know the timeline of that project and how much?
We'll have to develop a timeline for that.
Okay, okay. That would, that would, that would definitely be good to know, just so that we're prepared to spend more money to try and purchase those or whatever needs to happen to make sure that they, we don't lose all that affordability. Those are my questions. Thanks.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank Councilmember Baker for, for always keeping our eye on the prize when it comes to affordable housing. I, I do want to point out that this particular item, though, does not involve city funds. This is a, an item, this is one of those, and I know because I, I dealt with the same things when I first got on council, asking the same question. So I appreciate Councilmember Baker's antenna being up. One of those perfunctory things we need to do just to satisfy a legal requirement through a resolution. But, but am I correct in saying this does not involve any indebtedness to the city or, or the state, the issuance of these bonds per, per the memo?
Mayor Pro Tem, you are absolutely correct. This is actually a custodial in nature for the city. The Durham Housing Authority is the issue of the bonds. What the IRS requires is that the local jurisdiction in which the housing authority sits, that we have to approve this as a part of the IRS requirements, which basically means that we recognize.
Right, and we, and we've done this a number of times. We've done it for Central and other organizations and interests in the city. It is a way to, while not using the direct lever of city funds or municipal funds, it is a way to kind of contour the environment for affordable housing projects. And of course, to, to Councilmember Baker's point, when it's, when it's not under our direct purview, the terms may not be as stable or as, as desirable as we want, but it is still forwarding in the environment, still forwarding the, 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 the plausibility, if you will, of affordable housing to be in our mix. So, but I, I, I think to Councilmember Baker's point, we definitely do need to, to keep our antenna up and, and keep vigilant. But I did, I did want to make sure that we understood this wasn't city, this isn't city funds. Here, this is just a per, kind of a perfunctory legal checkmark that we're called to do on from time to time. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, if I could also, just to, to build on that point, so point very well taken, my colleague, Councilmember Middleton. To Councilmember Baker, I think this is, this is all important background on this finance question. I think the additional pieces that this, this 30-year period of affordability, which has kind of been ingrained in these federal tax credits, right? Low-income housing tax credits, those are as well, to your point, those are federal tax credits. So it's not tax credits we issue at the city. So it's federal tax credit. It is public dollars. But I think your point is well taken, that we should have a good sense of how many properties are on this, you know, 30-year, or whether it's 30 or 15-year affordability sort of period and have a good sort of line of sight so that when these are coming out of their period of affordability, that we have knowledge well in advance, maybe five or more years in advance, so we can both let the residents know, but also potentially consider are these properties we might want to try to acquire, right? To maintain the affordability. So these are all, I think the, the, the point you raised about having some kind of database or census of all these properties is really well taken, and I would very much support that idea. Thank you.
Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, and I would also second that as well. I think that in the past, we've had conversations about setting up databases around, even for the development cases that come forward and they proffer affordable housing units and making sure that those are lined up. I would also add that it's important to make sure that the details of that, whether it's one, two, three, four, or five bedrooms, is also included in that as well. So I, I don't know where you are in the work plan, but it'd be good to get a grip on making sure that that's a priority in this year or within this year, because I think, you know, as affordability is, is lessened and we keep losing affordable housing units and more units are being added, our housing mix has changed a lot. And I noticed on the U.S. Census data, the county has information, but the city does not. And I don't know where the disconnect is, but I want to make sure that we can figure that out. Thank you.
So any other comments, questions? All right. Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
All right. All right, next item, number six. Councilmember Baker.
Actually, I think that was the name of Mr. Mayor.
That was Middleton. Council, Mayor Pro Tem Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You want to say hi and introduce yourself? Who are you, sir?
Excuse me, sir. Good afternoon, Randy Beeman, Director of Emergent Communications. Good to be here.
Good to see you, Randy. Thank you so much. And as always, we appreciate what you and that incredible team that work under you do for us in the city. Please extend our regards to them. So there, there's, there's some banter about in the media about this item. And I actually spoke to somebody from the media yesterday. So I just want to get some clarity as to what this is. One of the spins out there is that this is in response to our immediate kind of tactical needs with staffing, when my, this is actually in the event of a cataclysmic breakdown of our, of our system, correct? Just tell us what this is and what this is not, if you would.
I, I will be glad to. So this is an interlocal agreement. So in the 911 community, that's across the state, we have a system called an EZNet. That's the Emergency Services Internet System. So there's 127 PSAPs involved. Each of those PSAPs, we being one of those, needs to have an interlocal agreement. What that interlocal agreement is for is for those catastrophic situations, those emergencies, where the center itself is incapacitated, which means it cannot receive calls nor can it dispatch. So in this particular interlocal agreement, that is specifically the language that's contained within it is when our center is incapacitated in an emergency status and we are relocating to our backup facility. So this interlocal agreement would then allow for the calls to be answered by the agreeing party, that being the city of Fayetteville, who will answer those calls while we are in transit to the backup center.
Thank you so much for that. And, and the, the operable term is, is a catastrophic event that takes us offline. This is not during the day of a regular course of events, our operators, our call takers, responders can't respond to calling, it gets bumped to Chapel Hill or bumped to, this is not what that is.
That is not what that is at all. It has nothing whatsoever to do with staffing.
Got you. All right. Thank you, and I hope that our, our friends in the public and the media get that understanding because some of the, some of the, the spin, I don't mean spinning in a pejorative sense, some of the way the, the framing of the story is that this is because of staffing issues, when this is actually something quite strategic and, and big and, and the event of we're totally offline.
Absolutely. And, and we in the city of Durham, Emergent Communications are just like the other PSAPs in the state. They are required, we are required to have that arrangement in our local agreement.
Got you. That's it. Thank you so much for, for clearing that up for us. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
When are you going to invite us out there? When's y'all's week for appreciation where council gets to come?
Thank you so very much for actually, Councilmember, we are preparing a proclamation for the 15th Board Meeting, and that is actually the week of National Telecommunicators Week. And we will be sending invitations out. It begins on a Saturday and ends on a Sunday, so 14 April through that entire week. So we look forward to your visit.
Thank you. And for council, for new council colleagues, when we get that invite, it's always a fabulous tour and getting to meet some of our 911, 911 call dispatchers and just seeing the, the great facility we have and some of our core city workers doing excellent work.
Thank you so very much. And, and I will share with you, and a few of you council members have done this previously, we will actually give you the opportunity to put a headset on and listen, listen to the callers as it comes into the center. You're more than welcome. We would invite you, and it's quite an interesting opportunity to learn more about Emergent Communications and how it functions and operates.
That's also a reminder as well to make sure that my new colleagues understand that our call takers have not been identified as first responders, and so they do not receive the same type of benefits that first responders receive. And it's a good chance to advocate for our first responders who are on the calls to be acknowledged as first responders and their benefits.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you. Councilmember Rist, you are acknowledged.
Mr. Beeman, thanks for the presentation and the clarification there. Just one question about, in this kind of risk management framework. So I imagine that Fayetteville, who's our new partner with his interlocal agreement, assuming we pass this at the next meeting, right? That they, they also have an alternate routing relationship themselves, right? So in the rare occurrence where there was a catastrophic thing happening in Durham and in Fayetteville at the same time, I imagine our routing relationship, if we're routing to them and they're also in a catastrophic situation, their alternate would also then kick in for us, right? Is that, is that correct?
That would, that would occur similarly, yes.
So there's, there's like a chain there where there's sort of like, where at some point someone will be available to, in a, in an incredibly rare moment, someone would be there backup to backup to answer the calls we have here, right?
And vis a vis the significance of the network that I was speaking about for the interconnectivity of the various PSAPs.
Thank you.
All right, great. And you, you, you said it con, you, you said it kindly. Colleagues, when you do go over there, if you haven't, and you put on a headset, it is a very anxious experience. So just make sure your nerves are in check and you'll have a greater appreciation at how our 911 center call takers keep their cool. Mayor Pro Tem.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I, you, you are 100% right. Brace yourselves. You may hear some things sometimes that are quite, quite riveting. I do want to, however, associate myself and, and celebrate what Councilmember Freeman said about the recognition of responders. I think it was last year, maybe a year ago, I had an opportunity, the, the great honor of introducing the resolution to recognize our call takers as first responders. It's actually a, a statewide initiative to do that. I know one of the things that the, we've had conversations within the North Carolina League of Municipalities to put some muscle behind changing that designation precisely for the reasons that Councilmember Freeman has pointed out in terms of not only just the proper recognition, but there are some implications in terms of, of compensation and participation in various funds and pools of that nature. So that's something that, that we hope to get beyond the resolution stage, and I, I plan on certainly pushing that with the league as well in the coming years. So thank you. Good to see you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Got it. Thanks for being here.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your kind words there, sir. Your adventure on the headset was quite enlightening and it was good to see. And hope to see all of you all. We will be sending out invitations. And, and don't worry about the time because we're there 7:24. So anytime you're available, we'll be ready. Thank you.
Thank you. What was the next one? All right, next item. Baker, Baker. All right, item number nine. Councilmember Baker, you pulled this?
Yeah, just a real quick question. First of all, I'm glad that we're not pressure washing our trees. Tree watering sounds routine enough that we might do that in-house. Can you just explain to me why, why we need to contract this out and whether, you know, in the future, we're looking at being able to bring something like this in-house or what, 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 what requires us in this situation to contract this out?
Good afternoon, council members, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. My name is Kevin Lilly, Assistant Director with General Services, and with me is Dan Hickey, Urban Forestry Supervisor.
Hey, Kevin, would you pull the mic just a little closer, please? I'm sorry.
Certainly. I'm a little shorter than most.
We're in the same club, that's.
There we go.
How's that? Typically, what we find is the watering that we do for our trees is done during the summer months, and that's the time when both our urban forestry staff and our landscape staff are at their full capacity with their daily activities. We have attempted to do this in, in various stages of looking at part-time labor, seasonal labor, and nothing has been successful for us in the past. So we opted to go with a contracted route with a company that owns a water truck and has the ability to travel throughout all of our streets to apply the water while our teams, our in-house staff are actually out doing their, their daily work.
Okay, so there's just sort of a surge of need in these summer months and then that goes away?
Yeah, all of the rights of way are either contracted out or done by our internal house staff for mowing. And so that's done by us. And it's typically when our urban forestry team is at their busiest, cutting and pruning trees.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Manager.
Thank you. I would just also like to add one, you know, one point of information around this particular project. It was funded with ARPA funding, which was additional funding that we all know is, is one-time funding. So often when we have one-time funding, it is, is very, much more efficient to try to do a request for proposal, get those one-time resources in to deploy those funds. But we are constantly looking at, you know, to, to make or buy any efficiencies all across our organization, and this, this cycle is, is no different. So just wanted to add that.
All right, thank you. All right, and thank you, Director Lilly. It's good to see you again.
You too, sir.
Remember going out to Oakland Avenue and I learned more about trees than I thought I ever would, including resident mitigation.
And you are welcome to join us anytime.
All right. Item number 10.
Yeah, this one, I was just, I was just curious. I was looking at the number of trees and, and the cost, and it came out to, I know this isn't how it's, how it's actually calculated, but about $900 per tree. So I was just curious, is that normal? Are these really nice trees?[1796.88] Why is it such a high price?
The trees that we're bringing in are bald and burlap trees, which are larger than what the city typically plants. We usually go with bare root or we'll go with containerized trees. Bald and burlap tree gives us a better record for survival, and we felt that that was the better product to put out on our city streets. The cost of $900 includes the purchase, the transportation, the warehousing, the installation, and a one-year warranty so that if the tree happens to die during that one year, it will be replaced. Prior to putting this out to bid, we had contacted several landscape companies and tree nurseries. And the estimates we were working with initially was about $1,000 a tree installed cost and warranted. So the $900 did not surprise us when it came in.
That's great. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
All right, thank you all so much.
Does one follow-up question there?
Yeah.
Sorry, just one more question. So just to give us a set, a good question, Councilmember Baker. So what would be the alternative cost if you were just going bare root trees? So the $900, how would that compare to the bare root?
I'm going to ask, Dan may have that information, but I believe the cost would be about a third of the cost if we were to go to a much smaller tree. But the likelihood of survival would be diminished.
Yeah, that is correct. It's a little apples and oranges. It's definitely more expensive to contract out planting, and we kind of knew that going in. This was through the ARPA funding again, so it's kind of a one-time, just in addition to the planting we already do in-house. But yeah, what Kevin Lilly has said is correct, about one-third the price.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all, colleagues. I believe that's it. We'll now move to our presentation. Director Sean Egan, Go Durham. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, and members of the City Council. Sean Egan, Director of Transportation for the city, and proud to bring you the 2023 Go Durham Annual Report today. For the Go Durham Transit System, fiscal year 2023 was defined by continued recovery from the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic and transition to a new management approach. This approach focuses on performance and accountability while establishing a strong foundation for delivery of major service and facility improvements in the years ahead. In May 2023, the council authorized a new service contract with financial penalties and incentives tied to the concerns voiced by riders during community engagement, such as on-time performance, cleanliness, and customer service. The new contract is managed directly by the City Transportation Department's new mobility services team, led by two of our region's most respected transit professionals, Brian Fahey and Jennifer Green. Fair free service in 2023 eased the burden for those essential workers our community relied on throughout the pandemic at hospitals, skilled nursing facilities, pharmacies, and grocery stores. And it enables access for the 77% of our riders who do not otherwise have access to a vehicle for transportation. We also laid the foundation for the expansion of our zero emission bus program. We joined the Zero Emissions Bus Resource Alliance to share data and best practices with our peers across the country. And we are providing training to our bus operators and mechanics so they have the skills to maximize the benefits of this clean energy technology for our riders and our community. Our senior shuttle, funded by the Durham County Transit Plan, addresses the importance of access to fresh foods for residents in senior living communities who have limited transportation options. We expanded the program in 2023, adding new sites at Carver Creek, Moorhead Hills, 519 East Main Street, and the Witted School. In February 2023, the Durham City Council recognized 16 inductees to the Million Mile Club, recognizing the extraordinary achievement of bus operators who safely navigated a 40-foot bus through our streets for 1 million miles without a preventable collision. In 2023, we provided over 910,000 more annual passenger trips compared to 2022, a 19% increase. Average daily passenger trips increased by over 2,400 compared to 22. And as shown in the chart, we're now regularly providing half a million trips each month on pace for more than 6 million trips in 2024. By population, the city of Durham is the fourth largest city in North Carolina, but our transit system has the second most ridership in the state. This is the clearest demonstration of how much Durham residents count on transit for their daily transportation needs. It also indicates a strong appetite for more and better services we can provide, thanks to support from the Durham County Transit Plan. The remainder of this presentation shows key performance indicators we have established for the Go Durham system. City of Durham and Go Durham operations staff meet monthly to review progress and identify opportunities to improve performance. Safety is our top priority, so we'll start with these KPIs. We track incidents at our Durham Station Terminal, where we have nearly 12,000 daily boardings, as well as onboard incidents on all of our routes across the system. As shown here, rates are consistently below target, but we continue to develop training and customer engagement tools to reduce the frequency of safety incidents on our system. We also continue to closely track operator assault incidents, and even the one we experienced in fiscal year 2023 is one too many. Improved training and coordination with law enforcement have helped to limit the number of assaults and threats to bus operators. What you can also see here with onboard incidents is that the majority of these are minor general disturbances or rule violations, such as playing music without headphones. What we call preventables can be a major collision or something as minor as a side mirror striking a sign or a tree branch. Note that in September of 2021, we had zero preventable crashes. We are working to make that a regular feature rather than an exception. We created the Million Miler Program to recognize those bus operators who have logged 1 million miles without a preventable crash. Due to the importance of transfers at Durham Station, the target for on-time arrivals at Durham Station is 99% or better. For all time points across our system, the target is 90% or better. And we're trending in the right direction here, but more work is needed, analyzing delays, adjusting schedules, and hiring more bus operators to reach our reliability goals. And on that note, our current starting wage is $19.65 with generous benefits. That'll be going up on July 1st. And anyone interested can visit godurhamtransit.org/careers for more information about our hiring. The red line here showing scheduled hours is used to measure the share of published 2020 service levels provided, taking into account announced service reductions due to staffing shortages. We are consistently around 100% on this measure. The blue bars show the difference between budgeted service and actual service delivered, reflecting the reduction to approximately 80% of the budgeted service levels for 2023. This is due to the consistent bus operator shortages that we experienced in 2023. But I'm pleased to report that as of January of this year, we increased service to 100% of 2020 service levels, and hiring continues to enable service expansion to begin in April. Each month, I have the pleasure of meeting with some of the most recent graduates from our training program to thank them for making these service restorations and expansions possible. We've set an aggressive target of more than 20,000 miles between failures, and we fell short of this goal repeatedly in 2023 as one-third of our fleet is at the end of its useful life and scheduled for replacement with the arrival of 18 new buses in 2026. Keeping the fleet in a state of good repair is critical to avoid service disruptions that can impose a significant hardship on our riders. An important change we made with our new contract was to add a Senior Director of Customer Engagement and Marketing, focused on the customer experience at Go Durham. Since taking on this role in July, Brenda Jones has brought a strong focus to addressing the complaints and using customer feedback to improve training and procedures to provide a better customer experience, including the QR code initiative we announced this week to enable riders to report cleanliness and other concerns at our stops. This is a standout indicator for us because we want our customers to know that their concerns are being addressed. So we consistently respond to 100% of our customer concerns within five business days. Looking ahead, our future is bright with the support of unprecedented funding for Go Durham in the 2023 Durham County Transit Plan. Design is underway for bus stop and access to transit improvements on the Holloway and Fayetteville corridors and the revitalization of Durham Station, as well as dramatic increases in system service levels of more than 50% in the years ahead. The full Durham County Fiscal Year 2025 Draft Transit Work Program is included as an attachment to your materials and is available on the Durham County website. The draft budget includes $27 million for the City of Durham's projects. And some of the highlights are increases to Go Durham service frequency and new crosstown routes, a $7 million increase for Durham Station to make the gorgeous image you see there a reality, an additional $4 million for Go Durham and Go Durham Access Operations and Maintenance Facility improvements, and $374,000 for the Direct Investment and Mobility Equity DIME Grant to support continued fair free service on Go Durham. As I close, I want to take a moment to thank our partners at Go Triangle, at the Durham Chapel Hill Carboro Metropolitan Planning Organization, whose support makes these improvements possible. But in particular, I want to recognize Durham County Transportation Director Ellen Beckman, who's joining us here today and who has been instrumental in advancing this critical work. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. And if anyone needs any tips on how to hire, that's pretty savvy in your coat pocket there. Colleagues, Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you. I will just say I love the tie as well as the pocket square. And I just appreciate the presentation. I think we've come a long way. And I appreciate your creativity in coming up with that Million Milers Bus Program or Drivers Program. And I don't have any questions. I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rist.
Mr. Egan, thanks for the presentation. Really enjoyed it. Appreciate the focus on customer service, the real intentionality there. Really appreciate that. And I appreciate your presentation with clear goals you set for yourself and your colleagues and sort of how you've performed against those. I really appreciate that transparency. My one question is about, and for the most part, you're performing at or above those metrics, which is really exciting. The one that I wanted to ask about was the safety one, the crashes per 100,000 miles. And that seems like for many months is above that target. I think that's, I don't know what slide number that is. But I wonder if you just have any thoughts on like what's happening there and what's needed to sort of reduce those preventable crashes?
So we're putting a really strong focus on training. And we're also adopting some new technologies. So one of the new technologies is a gyroscope that's loaded on the vehicle that tracks if there's sudden braking or sudden turning movements that are outside of what we would see. And so we've added that technology, and we're capturing the data for those sudden braking or sudden turning movements. And we're having our supervisors and trainers review that data with the operator who was behind the wheel at the time. And in many cases, that results in additional training for those operators because we want to identify the risk of a crash before we actually have an incident. And so that technology that's measuring those sudden movements is a tool that we're using. It's one of the many tools that we're using to improve the training of our operators to identify those risks and improve, make sure that they have the skills that they need, the training that they need, to be on the lookout for those risks and prevent those collisions from happening.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Cook.
Thank you so much for this presentation. I also was at the community presentation that you did a few weeks ago. And we had a lot more numbers going on in front of us at that point in time. So I do know that some of this exists out in the world, but I just had a couple of questions about the things that you put in front of us today. The first one, and actually Councilmember Rist asked one of my questions. So the first one I have on my list is you talked about that you were actually increasing the salary from 1965 and that there are great benefits. Are you seeing issues with a low number of applicants? Or is it an issue of retention? What's going on there with folks?
So we've been successful in attracting applicants. But one point that I emphasize when I meet with our operations team, and especially when I'm at those graduation lunches, is that we have a very rigorous training program that's focused on the safety of our system and the safety of our riders. And so most of the applicants who start our training program, they never get to the graduation lunch. They are unable to meet the requirements that we've set for the safety of our system. And what I've told our management team is we are not going to compromise on the safety of our system in order to get our bus operator count up. We are going to maintain high standards for safety and for service quality. And many of the applicants coming through our training programs cannot reach those standards. And so they're unable to complete the program.
I see. So instead of doing anything to increase the percentage of folks who make it through, you're just looking to increase the applicant pool so that we hopefully get some more drivers through?
We provide retraining opportunities when folks are struggling in the program. And in many cases, I hear it from the folks who are at the graduation lunch, they were ready to walk away. They were very frustrated. They felt like they weren't going to be able to do it. It's too hard. It is, I often say, it's the toughest job in transportation is driving a bus. It is very challenging work. Those of you who spent time on our streets know they're very challenging. So we work with our training team to do some outreach to folks who are getting discouraged, to give them additional time, additional training opportunities. But there are some folks who just can't meet those standards. And so we've made a decision to maintain those standards. But we are seeing significant growth in our operator count. We wouldn't be back at 100% in January of this year without that growth. We wouldn't be talking about a service expansion in April without growth. So we've put a very attractive compensation package into place, and it's yielding results. We're getting good candidates who can meet all of our standards and requirements.
Awesome. And then you had also, you had quite a few kind of goals under the reliability category. And I understand the need for more drivers and for folks to complete that training. But what else is needed besides staff to meet those reliability goals?
Well, some of it is the service levels and the crowding that we're seeing on our system. So I tried to get just down the street. So I tried to get just down the street here. I tried to get on the Route 4 bus a few months ago. It was about 2:00 in the afternoon, and the bus stopped, and they told me it's full. There's no room. There were a few of us at the stop. We're seeing significant crowding on many of our routes. And that degrades reliability and on-time performance. The more crowded the bus is, the longer it takes at each stop for people to get on and off, and the slower that bus goes. So the solution that we're bringing and that we're able to do because of the funding in the Durham County Transit Plan is to add service frequency on the Route 4. So right now, it's a 30-minute frequency route. We're going to bring that up to 15-minute service frequency. So we're going to double the service frequency on the Route 4. And what that's going to do is going to distribute the passengers. It's going to reduce crowding and improve reliability for the system. So that's one of the initiatives that we have underway.
Great, thank you. And then my next question was you mentioned in 2026 that we have a lot of new buses incoming. Could you talk a little bit more about where that funding is coming from? And just tell me one more time the number of new buses that we have coming online?
So we've had, we have 18 new buses. Each bus costs about $1.1 million. So these are zero emissions, battery-electric buses. We're able to purchase these buses because we've been very aggressive in pursuing funding from our funding partners. So we won a $5.7 million grant from the Federal Transit Administration through their Low and No Emissions Bus Program. We worked with Congressman David Price, who submitted a $2 million community project funding request for the city. We worked with the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality that's administering the Volkswagen Diesel Emissions Settlement funding. And we were able to secure funding from NCDEQ and the VW Settlement, as well as the Federal Highway Congestion Mitigation and Air Quality Program. So we have been aggressively pursuing every dollar from every external partner that we can. And we put that funding package together, and that's how we were able to order the 18 zero emissions buses.
Okay, that is awesome to hear. I love hearing about folks going after specific grants because I think that's such a good way to finance this. And we're getting these zero emission buses for, we need to replace the buses anyway, is what I heard you saying.
That's right.
And so we're replacing them with high-quality, zero-emission buses, which I love. Do we have the infrastructure to support those buses at this time?
We are, that's our next federal grant application is actually, we're going back to the Low and No Emissions Federal Transit Administration, and we'll be applying for additional funding for charging equipment so that we have all of the equipment online in 2026 when those buses arrive. So, Mr. Mayor, I'll be reaching out for a letter of support and out of manager as well.
Thank you. Those are all my questions.
Just one question. Maintaining the fare-free bus system, I think, is important to me and many of my colleagues up here. Can you just talk a little bit about any hurdles we face moving forward? I know that there's some revenue sources that might be running out. Do you foresee any challenges? Or do you think that for the foreseeable future, we have a clear path towards maintaining fare-free buses?
So we were very fortunate to get federal funding with the COVID-19 pandemic. And we have been working to draw down all of that. That funding, the remnants of that funding enable us to continue the fare-free into 2025. But once we look at 2026 and beyond, the combination of the very generous compensation that we're offering to our staff, that's really the biggest financial driver long-term for us, is that we've raised wages and benefits, retirement, healthcare for the employees. That's driving a cost profile that's increasing. And we're going to exhaust all of the remaining federal funding in fiscal year 25. And so we'll be coming back in '26, looking at that expected gap that's caused by the fare-free, as well as, to a larger extent, the employee compensation.
Thank you.
Just one follow-up real quick. Yeah. Just a follow-up on that. So you mentioned, Mr. Regan, the Durham County Transit Plan with respect to the fare-free buses. So can you describe what the balance of, like, what's the, how are we sharing funding with the county to provide the fare-free buses? What's that look like?
Sure. So we submitted a project to the Durham County Transit Plan for fiscal year '25. We looked at the funding that had been allocated for special pass programs like the Youth Go Pass, as well as funding for technology to do mobile ticketing and funding for fare capping, which basically gives customers the benefit of a monthly pass without having to pay upfront for the monthly pass. So funding for all of those fare-related initiatives was programmed in the 20-year Durham County Transit Plan. But we couldn't access any of those dollars without charging fares. So what we proposed was to turn those multiple streams into a single block grant that would be available. The value of those streams was $374,000. That covers about 20% of our expected fare revenue loss. And so what we proposed was that those funding streams be converted into that block grant. And very pleased to say that that proposal was included in the work program, and we're looking forward to that getting approved this year.
This is like an 80/20 share, 80 city, 20 county.
That's outright.
Hey, Rosa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sean, good to see you, man. Thank you so much for a great presentation. The Go Durham buses are clean, they're comfortable, and they have Wi-Fi.
They're free.
Absolutely. And I want to congratulate you on pulling off the small miracle of making it excellent and keeping it fare-free. So no pressure on there, how we ask for greatness and we want to keep it free at the same time. I do want to, maybe two questions and maybe a bit of a commercial for Go Durham as well. Firstly, on the slide, the fare-free transit, the surveys, it says the source is the 2022 Go Durham onboard survey. Is that right?
It was in the field in 2022. The survey, the results were published in 2023, but it was based on what we call intercepts.
Right.
Talking to customers onboard the buses in 2022. So this is, you know, in the full impact of the pandemic, this survey was taken.
Right. The reason why I asked, I took a survey, but I think it was on the number two, but it was during 2023. So when did those surveys?
They were in the field, I think, in like November, December. And I think some of them may have spilled into January. I can get the specific dates, but.
I definitely took a survey on the number two in 2023. And I was curious about the possibility or how we guarded against repeats because another time it was on the number five, and a worker asked me to take it. I told him I already took it. But somebody else on the bus told me that, yeah, I've taken it like two or three times already on different, you know, buses. And I don't know if they were capturing folk that had already taken it. So I'm wondering, because I, this is unscientific. My suspicion that it's probably higher than 77% the folk that ride who don't have access to cars. But that's unscientific, as is Middleton. Do we know or did we try and capture possible repeat surveys or multiple survey takers?
I'd have to look into the firm that conducted that survey and what controls they had into place, but I could certainly look into that.
Cool. I want to, again, this is really exciting because anyone that has a vision of Durham being walkable and is concerned about car-centric development without also bolstering our transportation capabilities and supporting it and advocating for it, those are really kind of at odd visions. But I know that it can be challenging. I know that when I, you have to be very deliberate in planning trips sometimes for connectivity's sake and getting, you know, I'd be very clear. It's very easy to be car-centric in this town and sometimes planning trips. If you've got to go downtown to get to the mall from your neighborhood, you know, to the downtown center. But I will, I do want to maybe just gently advocate for intentionality on using our system, particularly if you want it to measure the view we have of ourselves as a city and the trajectory we have on ourselves as a city. And it will take some intentionality. You know, I look at it perhaps, you know, for my colleagues, if you're going to do a ride-along with the police or fire or go sit with 911 first responders, ride Go Durham as well, put Go Durham on that list as something just to do. Which leads me to, is on-ramp to my next point. I respect the driver safety. Trying to be incognito, but when I got off at the.
You're very recognizable.
Well, well, those post office shots are really good. At the hub downtown, going to take a trip to South Point, I think it's number five, got off, and of course, got into some conversation with some folk and some of the drivers. And this is anecdotal, but one driver told me about getting substance thrown on them and having to clean it, and you probably know about this case, having to clean it up themselves. Concerned about weapons being fired at the bus. You spoke about assaults on drivers as well. So I want to, and I'm glad that we're looking more at compensation, but could you just say a little more, without divulging anything that's proprietary or that needs to be, you know, kept from public hearing, but say a little more about what we're doing to keep our drivers, who work so hard, do an incredible job, safe, specifically with the physical assaults and concern about weapons? I know we had looked at barriers at some point.
We've implemented those protective barriers on 100% of our fleet.
100%.
So that's one of the initiatives. We also have Durham Police Officers at Durham Station. If you've been down there, you'll see them patrolling the station. And we work also on patrols on some of the routes where we've had reports of incidents and issues. And so there's careful coordination with DPD. We're also in conversations with community safety about bringing to bear some of the resources, like the HART team, to respond to crisis needs on the system that don't require a law enforcement response, but do require a response. And we want trained professionals to be able to respond to a crisis like that. And that'll provide better protection and better safety and security for our bus operators coordinating those responses as well.
Right. And I know this may have reached your desk as well. And I know I've spoken to a couple of drivers. We do not, we do not want our drivers armed. We do not allow the drivers, even if they have a concealed carry permit, to carry weapons on them. And I know some of our drivers were, but just to be clear.
It's prohibited, yeah.
Yeah, it's prohibited, absolutely. We don't want guns on the bus by anybody. Finally, I'll just say, you know, it's really a staggering statistic that we're fourth in the state population, but we're number two in terms of ridership.
Charlotte, we're coming for you.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And think about that. We're number two even given all of the challenges we have. Even, and you know, and we in Durham, we have a higher bar than a lot of folk in the state because we'll talk about, you know, car-centric development, and we need to do more with transit. And, but we're sitting here, the number-two users in the state for population, which I think is an invitation to do even more, not to rest on our laurels, but do even more. And I just want to encourage everybody listening, all of our residents and citizens, to, you know, use the bus. Part of what we got to do is de-stigmatize our system. You know, it's got to be egalitarian. It's got to be folk working at Google and Facebook along with folk working at Duke, whether you're doing surgery or cleaning floors at Duke, if we're going to become that city that we envision. So yeah, keep riding and keep doing what you're doing. Congratulations on a great report. And I look forward to getting back to you on that survey information and looking forward to seeing those new buses rolling in the streets. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Director. This is quite impressive. Our bus network here and our drivers and just all of the data that's supporting this. I wanted to, I serve on the board. Well, first of all, let me shout out Transportation Director for the county, Ellen Beckman, who's in the audience. Thanks for joining us. That's my train buddy. You know, we ride the train somehow in over the train station at the same time sometimes when heading to Raleigh. We are, basically, we, our transit system is doing extremely well. And as I've stated, one thing I want to do as mayor is just build federal, build national relationships, federal relationships to continue to bring resources to Durham. One was the recent $4.88 million for the electric charge stations. Now, it said it's going to happen over 12 years. We want that to be a lot sooner. So we'll look into that. The other is all of the grants that you, that your team have bought in for Durham Central Station. And I just, I got to say on the record how excited I am about the vision for our transit network, being able to, instead of going from point A downtown to point B, that we'll eventually be able to go from point A to point B. And if downtown is not a year out, you don't have to come downtown, which would make our overall network much more efficient. And as, you know, we already talked about, we now have bipartisan relationships at the federal level and state level to where whenever we are, you know, putting forth an application that we will have significant push at all levels. That is, when you see me going to DC, folks, that's what I'm working on. So really excited about that. Considering, also serve on the board for Go Triangle. And Go Triangle is bringing back rates, fare rates, as well as Wake County. There is some sense of logic behind it. I am one to, I think transit should be like public schools, free and accessible. What should we, but also know, you know, in the real world, we have, you know, we got to be practical. I am always going to try and, I mean, we, now you, I've been bit by the bug. Now I want to keep free, fare-free transit. But is there anything that we should be on the radar for just not catching us off guard in the upcoming years, considering Raleigh, Wake County, and Go Triangle have reincorporating fees again? That, my question is, is there anything we should be on the lookout for that would pressure us or require us to reincorporate fees or fares?
So it does need to be, I think, part of a larger conversation about funding for transit in our community. What we're trying to demonstrate is that we're pursuing as much funding as possible from every available source. So from the FTA capital grants, from the Volkswagen settlement, from the County Transit Plan, the DIME program for fare-free. And so we've been relentless in pursuing those funds. But the council will need to make a decision at some point going forward. We're about the future of fare-free and the future of the level of operator compensation that we have. We're also looking at other states. Virginia, for example, has a state-supported fare-free bus program where the state supports agencies that are offering free fares. So like Richmond, for example, is one of the participating systems there. And we're interested in talking to some of our regional and state partners about, could we try something like that? Maybe not at this, maybe at the state level, potentially at the regional level. There's federal funding available to reduce vehicle miles traveled. So one of the best ways to reduce vehicle miles traveled is by getting more people on our buses. So we're exploring some of those opportunities. Is, are there additional sources that we can develop to support fare-free transit? And so we'll be coming back to you as we're able to develop those. But we're going to leave no stone unturned in terms of finding additional funding for this.
Thank you so much. Well, considering, colleagues, that our mayor pro temp will be state president of the League of Municipalities, hopefully we can enlist him to convince our state partners, no pressure, convince our state partners to consider the fact that, you know, when our region, which is a hotspot in the nation, is strong, so is the state. And that this could be a benefit that they see as a win as well. But I do know at some point, we will have to make a political decision because those grants are not necessarily going to be lasting that way.
Onetime funding for the most part.
Right, right. So right now, you guys are doing a heck of a job bringing in grants and support, but I do know that at some point, we're going to have to make a decision and that's going to be significant. So just want to put that on there. Councilmember Caballero.
Just really briefly, I just wanted to say thank you. I know this contract with Go Durham was a big part of 2023's work for your department. And I remember at the beginning, at the time, it was Mayor Williams and I were MPO members. And so that's where a lot of these conversations were initially happening was in our MPO prep calls. And I thought it was super ambitious and was eager that it would happen, but wasn't sure how it was going to turn out. So I just think that it was a really good call. It has led us really embark on the journey that we need to on transit in the city. So thank you and I'm look forward to keep, I like to win, so I keep looking forward to winning more dollars.
Talking about you behind your back, that's what I was up here saying. I was like, you know, we used to talk about this stuff and he's actually bringing it forth and it's working now. All right, so good comment. Councilmember Caballero, Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you. And I think to that point, it's really important to note that the, I guess, the cost around us running this system and service is around $147. And I had to go in and note that in 51 cents, and so for less than.
Per hour, yeah.
Per hour. And so for $150 per hour, I think we can figure out how to increase compensation and keep the fare free because I think that is a good rate to be at and we can, we can figure it out. So I'm not concerned. I will also note, I had not had a chance to share, I know I asked the Communications Department to share, I am currently serving as the Vice Chair for the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee for the National League of Cities. And it is my hope to have a few conversations over the Hill Day next week to, if I could clear up a little bit more, I feel a little bit more comfortable, but to have a few conversations with folks in transportation and figuring out some of our bus rapid transit conversations, some of the funding that needs to be in place for that. And then also just making sure that we're not forgetting how all this works together. I really did want to ask though, while you're here, if you're seeing a, if the communication is working out around construction and bus service, because I know that the incident level is kind of high, but, but are you seeing any, any increase in incidents with the construction? Because there's a lot of construction happening in our downtown core.
It's a real challenge for us keeping up with all of the construction. If you look at our service alerts, you will routinely see services that are being disrupted, rerouted because of construction. So for example, on Lakewood Avenue, right now, there's a major water line project that is disrupting the Route 5 and has been. So we are working very hard to make sure that we're providing that service alert information to our riders. You can find it, if you use Google Maps and you click on the transit button in Google Maps, you can get real time information about how many minutes away your bus is from the stop, but you can also get information about, all right, well, is this stop, was this stop taken out of service because there's a construction project happening? And so that, that stop can no longer be served. We're seeing some of that on East Main Street, for example, with the county construction project. So we're encouraging folks to sign up for those service alerts and we're trying to develop as much technology as possible. But Durham is a, is a very popular destination for major construction projects right now. And we want to be a vibrant and growing city that embraces that. But we need to make sure that we're providing accurate, up to date information to our riders and that we're working with the development community to minimize those disruptions as much as possible.
Thank you. That was all. Thank you.
And Councilmember Freeman, thanks for bringing that up. The fact that you're on that National Committee, not only collaborating municipal wide with local officials across the country, Mayor Pro Tem is going to be President of the League of Municipalities for the entire state, which is the most powerful group that can provide impact on the General Assembly to local progress. And Councilmember Cook and Baker, we need to get you all on some of these national groups as well, and Rist. So get ready for your memberships to.
Just had an NLC call today, by the way, so.
Yep, yep. It'd be great to have everybody, and you'll really love NLC. I haven't been to Local Progress yet because Councilmember Caballero hasn't invited me. Just don't get on the spot. I know Freeman and Middleton are members as well. But thank you all. Thank you all so much. Director, and in closing, I am still a proud card carrying CDL member.
Hiring.
I'm not driving, I see how difficult it is to drive those big buses in our streets, but I kept my CDLs from when I was teaching, so shout out to our drivers and let them know we really appreciate them.
Just for the record, you don't need a CDL to come work at Go Durham, just a regular driver's license and a clean driving record. And we will train you, we'll help you get your permit, your CDL permit, and then we'll take you through the whole training process to get your full CDL.
All right, put me on the substitute list.
All right. Thank you.
All right. All right, thank you so much for that great information.
I did have a follow up question first for our city manager. I didn't know if there was any way to find out. I think for the bus system, there's an alert, but I don't know if there's an alert for our biking system. Like, I don't know if there's anything in place or not, but when those routes are offline, if they're trying to bike through, especially on Main Street, if trying to bike through, it's going to be on one side and making sure folks know that in advance.
We do not have that type of system in place at this, at this time.
So we belong to the National Association of City Transportation Officials. We have, a number of our staff are going to be at their annual meeting in May, and we can, we can do peer outreach to find out what the best practices across the country are for alerting cyclists about impacts, alerting pedestrians about sidewalk closures and other impacts because it's really important.
All right, that's the agenda. I had a few other items that we, that I know Councilmember Caballero and I both needed to get support for. Do you want to go first?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Williams. Just real quickly, Justice Matters, the organization that holds our Immigrant Legal Defense Fund, would like to come to a work session, either, either work session in April, and it's our practice to, when we have organizations wanting to present, to come to the full council and make sure there's a desire for that. So that is my ask. I just thumbs up. Thank you. That's all. And then so just for staff following up, I think, from the city attorneys, hi Carlos, I think you're the staff liaison, so do you mind just following up with them to get them on the work session for either one they said is fine in April? Thank you.
Thank you. And I had two items that I needed to bring forth for us as a presentation. One is the Discover Durham presentation on the, Discover Durham presentation for, I'll come back to that one. The, one thing I needed to bring was the Sister Cities of Durham presentation. It's time for the MOU renewal for Qushan, Qushan, Qushan China reaffirming our friendship city relationship. And it'll be a quick presentation, but before we renew that MOU, we needed to have the presentation. Good. Okay. And also, our Discover Durham had a presentation that they needed to bring to us that would pose a decision that we'll have to make ultimately, but before we get to any policy changes or anything, they needed to provide a presentation to the, to the council. Can I get a thumbs?
That's Discover Durham?
Yes.
It's about their, their, like, master plan, their, yeah.
All right, yep. Okay, cool deal. Thank you all. Oh, yeah, you want me to? Okay, all right. And also, so the State of the City is coming up, really excited about it. We're putting a lot of work in it and a lot of what some of our one-on-one conversations have been will be incorporated in it because not only from what staff is doing, also initiatives from council. It will be different this year. It will be an event. It will not be on the council meeting agenda in City Hall. It will actually be at a city, city owned facility in downtown Durham. And it's going to have, we're going to have like a mini resource fair for folks to sign up and make sure they have access to the resources that the city offers. It's going to have some guest presenters, some of our youth throughout the city. We're going to have live music, going to have some light bites, refreshments, and then I'll provide a State of the City that's going to be quite the vision projection for what's to come. With that being said, one of the things that we're going to be talking about is something that Councilmember Caballero is working on right now. You hear me talk about advisory councils directly to help inform me, but we're going to have some working groups and Councilmember Caballero is taking that on. That's going to be quite the trifecta. So she's going to give us a quick kind of intro to what she's working on, on not only mine, but our behalf.
Thank you, Mayor Williams. This is just a continuation of a conversation that was brought to Joint City-City last week. I'm pretty sure Councilmember Freeman was there, Councilmember Rist was there, and Mayor Pro Tem was there. The, the idea is to have a joint housing initiative with both the county and Durham Public Schools so that when we were talking about our housing strategies, we are not doing it in silos, we are doing it collaboratively. I've also had conversations with Manager Page, and so the, the mayor, Commissioner, Board Chair alum and, I should say, County Commissioner Chair alum and Board Chair Umstead will be handling appointments to the task force. And it will be, it'll be broad, it will not be, it'll include components like workforce, housing, it'll include components around land use and transit. We're trying to make this as broad as possible. And the reason we want it to be both county, city, and schools is we understand that the interconnectedness in all these spaces is crucial if we're actually going to chart a different future around housing in the city that we're all aware is a priority for residents and consistently gets put, if not in the top, top priority, definitely in the top three priority. So that's all. Thank you.
Yep, so I'm looking forward to really introducing that. This will be possibly the first time there's ever been a housing strategy put in place with multiple facets of our community from all three governing bodies in Durham County. So really excited about that. Councilmember Freeman.
Just following up, you said the State of the City, will that take place in place of the city council meeting or is it in addition to the city council meeting?
It would be, it would be a separate event. So it'd be, we'll have our regular council meeting, but this will be off.
Do you have a date already?
April, April 9th. Glad you asked me that because I keep getting, keep getting in trouble. Councilmember Caballero keeps saying, you better let everybody know so we can be there. So April 9th, please, colleagues, make sure you have that in your. Yep, all right, April 9th, and we will, we'll, we'll have a lot of marketing behind it. All right, that's our agenda. All right, and also, there has also been, I'm ready, Madam Clerk, I'm ready. So we're going to settle the agenda and then make a motion to accept the agenda being settled. Right? Yep, okay. Oh, so I'm going to acknowledge Madam Clerk for the appointments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's short. The first nomination is for the Mayor's Hispanic Latino Committee, and it is for the nominee of Heidi and Andino. And the second and last is the Durham Workers' Rights Commission appointment in the category of low wage industry, and the nominee is Gary Elwood. And that's the end of the report.
Thank you so much. At this time, Madam Manager, we'll settle the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For consent, I have Agenda Items 1 through 18 and GBA public hearing, Items 20 through 22. Thank you.
All right, I'll now entertain a motion to settle the agenda.
So move.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, sounds good. We will now recess to closed session. We will, let's go straight on up there, we'll be in the committee room. Yeah, let's, let's, let's all go on up, but take a, take a bathroom break if you need to.